I'd like to convene the special meeting of the Board of Selectmen of Thursday, January 16, 2014. This meeting is to receive the report of Mylone and McBroom about their analysis of the Country Club of Woodbridge property. This is a special meeting of the Board of Selectmen, but because of the nature of the presentation and the various boards and commissions involved, we have invited Town Plan and Zoning Commission, the Board of Finance, the Country Club of Woodbridge Commission, and members of the Woodbridge Listens Country Club of Woodbridge Ad-Hoc Committee. So I'd like to welcome all our guests. Thank you for joining us this evening. The goal of this meeting is for the various board members to hear the presentation of Michael Looney from Mylone and McBroom and to comment upon the presentation. Our goal is to have the presentation made at a public informational forum. I have a date that I will set when we get to that item on the agenda. We've done this before. It's my understanding that in past years as well, when there's been a presentation to the public, the Board of Selectmen and at times other boards look at the presentation beforehand, before it's done with the public. It's what we did with respect to the informational forum on the Beecher Road School Project. We had the presentation here. There was good input from the board members, which resulted in a much better presentation to the public. So that's what we'll be doing here. And I do want to remind people who are here, who are not part of the invited guest list and people out there watching, that at the public informational forum, there will be ample opportunity to comment on this report, to ask questions, and to still present other ideas that people may have with respect to the Country Club. As we've all discussed many times, this is perhaps the biggest issue facing the town right now, other than the Beecher Road School renovation project. But it's a grave concern to so many of our residents, and it's very important that we continue the public discussion that we began with the community conversations. So with that, I would like to introduce Michael Looney of Mylone and McBroom and ask you, Michael, if you would present the report and just to put in a little bit of context with respect to the plan of conservation and development.
Okay. Thank you very much, Madam Selectwoman. Again, for the record, my name is Michael Looney. I'm an associate with the firm of Mylone and McBroom. I serve as a principal planner, working in the planning group at our headquarters based in Cheshire, Connecticut. I've met a number of you at various meetings. Just for those of you who don't know me, I'll give you a little brief background on my history. Lifelong resident of the greater New Haven area. I graduated from Yale in 1998 and got my master's degree from MIT in 2002 in city planning. And since that time, I guess now for about a dozen years, I've been working as a private planning consultant, having worked previously as a public sector planner for the city of New Haven. What our charge has been as part of the update of the plan of conservation and development process has been to take a look at the Country Club of Woodbridge, some of the issues that the property is facing, and what can be done in terms of development or preservation going forward into the future. We started back, really back in about November. I came to the first two listening sessions in October, just to get a sort of temperature of the town, see which way folks were feeling about the property and what should be done with it. One of the things that really struck me about those listening sessions were the tremendous attendance for a town of this size. I was very impressed by how interested everyone was in this property and how important it is to all the town residents. But I also heard a lot of very diverse feedback in terms of what folks think should be done with the property. Given that, there were some central themes that seemed to come out of that. The ad hoc committee put together a very nice report, which highlighted those. So that was a good start for us to get a feel of, you know, where things were going in terms of the mindset of the town residents, what they saw as the future potential for the property. After that, we began delving into the details of the property, the physical characteristics, some of the activities that had occurred over there over the course of the years, looking at the history of the property as it went from being a country club to being purchased and owned by the town. We did a lot of work in reading the past studies. There've been a number of studies done on both the golf course itself and its facilities, including especially the clubhouse facility, the 43,000-square-foot clubhouse. I had a chance to tour the property as well and see the conditions for myself, which was also very beneficial. Once we went through this information gathering portion of our assignment, we really started to take a look at what were the different things that you could potentially do with this site? And we really didn't, we didn't put too many, initially did not put on too many limitations. We tried to think as broadly as we could about what the different options could be. And I'll get into that a little bit in the report in terms of the different potential development scenarios that we looked at and how we, you know, identified pros and cons with each of those and ultimately moved through sort of an iterative process to reach what we feel is a good recommended potential development scenario for the property going down the line. Just starting to go through the report.
Excuse me for one minute. Do we have extra copies? If there are other board and commission invitees here who would like to see the report, please.
That's okay. The first two pages of the report are really my attempt to kind of summarize our introduction or purpose, as I've been stating over the past few minutes, and to provide, just as a way of background, a general description of the property and the facilities that it has on site. These are all facts that most people in the town are quite familiar with and know pretty well. It listed some of the studies, as I mentioned, that we looked at, the capital needs assessment done by Silver Petricelli on the Country Club, the request for expression of interest for development in 2011, the Phase 1, 2, and 3 environmental site assessments, a structural and architectural conditions report done in 2009, as well as the appraisal for the property, which was completed, I believe, back in 2009. Really, three main elements that came out of doing this background research was that, and they play in, they come into play when we get later into our development scenarios and examining their possibilities. There's a lot of work that needs to be done with the clubhouse facility itself. Just remembering off the top of my head and looking through the study of the condition of the facility, it was somewhere in the area, I believe, between $2 and $3 million in investment that would need to be made, based upon that particular study. The environmental conditions on the site and the golf course are generally good. The town of Woodbridge has addressed several of these issues. And perhaps most interestingly, the request for expression of interest for the 17-acre piece of the property, kind of at the northeast corner of the property, that was the subject of a proposed private sector development proposal in 2011. I think what was interesting about that was the fact that although there was one responded, there was even when we were in a, still trying to come out of the doldrums of a residential market recession, there was still interest in doing residential development, not only in Woodbridge, but on this site in particular. And I think that's actually a very, very good sign going forward in terms of the desirability of this site and the possibilities of being able to do some development on the site in the future. Again, the public listening sessions, I'm not going to summarize everything that we heard there. We had a lot of notes taken from that. And then, of course, the ad hoc committee did a very nice job of summarizing everything that was said, especially in the small group sessions. Some of the things that I personally pulled out of being present at those listening sessions were that the previous golf course management agreement that was in effect at that time back in the fall, you know, really made the continued operation of the golf course financially extremely difficult. That was something that seemed to be echoed by a lot of folks who were present at the meeting and were providing input. The other point that I heard consistently was that open space should be preserved as much as possible. And it wasn't, and folks varied from preserving the whole thing to preserving just a little, some for keeping it town-owned, other for private recreation. But there was a consistent theme that open space should be a part of the future of this property. There was also considerable support for selling at least part of the property for development with restrictions placed on that development. One of the items that came up multiple times was possibly for 55, age 55 and older, age-restricted housing. If at all possible, it seemed that there was considerable support for maintaining a golf course as a use. Some folks were saying, let's look at a nine-hole course, let's keep an 18-hole course. But by and large, everyone wanted to do that, provided that it could be operated profitably, which seemed to be a very important, a very important point. Keeping the pool and the tennis courts under town control and ownership was also something that seemed to stand out. And there was some support for keeping the clubhouse and reinvesting it, in it, to keep it operational. But again, the financial success and viability of being able to do that was a key consideration as well. One of the first things I did after we started getting into the, past the information gathering section of our work and getting into looking at what can be done with the property, was hired a subconsultant who is an expert in golf course design and is based here in Connecticut, and wanted to have them take a look at the possible, could you even, is it even feasible to do a nine-hole golf course on this property? And I've attached, this is Mr. Bradley Klein, he's the principal of Divid Designs LLC, based in Bloomfield. I've attached his very brief, two-page report. He came down, took a look at the property, and could quickly identify that yes, it certainly was possible to do a nine-hole golf course. I wanted to just do that as part of our due diligence to make sure that we weren't proposing something that a golf course consultant would later come around and say, there's no way you could ever do nine holes here. I wanted to make sure that that was something that was even within the realm of possibility. So we completed that and received his report back. We started going through these different development alternatives. I have five that I've written up in this report. There's a sixth one that I'll just talk about. I haven't really written it up because we took a quick look at it and it really just, initially, just from a first look, really didn't seem like it was something that would have much legs to it. The first thing we did was, what would happen if you just took the whole property and let it be developed as single-family detached residential housing in a subdivision format? We assumed an application of the residential A-zone, which is the zoning in the area around the property currently in the surrounding neighborhood, and applied that to the site. We looked at issues of steep slopes and wetlands, other features that could be hindrances to development, tried to come up with an accurate estimate of how many units we thought someone might be able to get if they went, if they went this route, using the 65,000-square-foot lot size that's in the residence A-zone. We also, as part of this, had the portion of the property along Woodfield Road that had been previously the subject of the 2011 proposed development. We also kept that as a smaller subdivision, as well of single-family homes that would have primary access on Woodfield Road. When we looked at that, we saw that you could probably get somewhere in the area of between, depending on how a developer actually went about doing a detailed site plan, of somewhere in the area of 50, 60, 65 housing units. That seemed, even at an acre and a half zoning, seemed like quite a few units, particularly of single-family nature. But we wanted to see just what would happen if you took all limitations off and said, let's just turn this into a residential subdivision. The second option that we looked at was retaining the 18-hole golf course, but creating some associated active adult residential development. Again, the piece of the property that had been previously proposed for development in 2011 would be the site of that active adult housing. The portion of the property on the east side of Woodfield bordering against the parkway, we would have left as just, at least for this scenario, as open space. And Woodfield Road would have continued to be the primary access point for the golf course, as well as the new residential development. That would probably generate somewhere in the area of between 50 and 60 active adult units, very similar to the density of development you would have seen in the 2011 proposal for development there. Once we got confirmation that the nine-hole golf course was a potential option, we looked at a reconfiguration of the property wherein the periphery of the current golf course site, so really along Ansonia, Johnson, and then coming around the pond down to Woodfield, would be a nine-hole golf course that wrapped around interior residential development. The residential development that we saw in this case would be either age-restricted or age-targeted, but in a sort of detached, single-family housing style, where you'd have small, age-restricted houses along a number of curvilinear streets inside of this wraparound golf course. Again, the portion of the property that was proposed for development in 2011, we would have kept as attached active adult housing. And the property, again, on the east side of Woodfield Road against the parkway would have stayed as open space. What happens when you do that is, when you take the interior, because the golf course is a substantial acreage and you can get a lot of small, age-restricted housing, standalone housing units in a property of this size, we ended up with unit counts getting up over the 200 mark, which again, once we laid out the map, put the tracing paper over it, and sketched out what a site plan might look like, at least at a very rough level, it again, seemed like an awful lot of development, which, when we were looking at this type of concept, immediately jumping into my mind was that, you know, we have to balance development with maintaining some open space. That was clear from what the public told us. So we started to think that, you know, this is something to look at, but we're not so sure about this one. We also looked at just simply having the entire property become managed, still town-owned, but managed passive and active open space. The active open space being in the area closer to Johnson Road, maybe being able to use the pond as some sort of recreation feature, whether it's, you know, for paddle boating in the summer, or if our winters keep being as cold as they've been in the last couple of years, for ice skating in the winter. And then having the portion of the property, as you get closer to Woodfield Road, be for more passive uses, such as walking trails, jogging trails, biking trails, you know, possibly an amphitheater for outdoor performances and things of that nature. Within this scenario, the existing clubhouse and its associated facilities, such as the pool, would be retained by the town and converted into some sort of combined community recreation center that would be available for public use. One of the things that came up when we were thinking about that scenario after we drafted it up was, again, that issue of balance, the need to, at least what we got from coming to the listening sessions and talking to folks, that there's a desire for balance, not just for preserving open space, but also for getting some form of development, but development that makes sense, so that you have a boost to the tax base of the town. So that was starting to play in our minds, same way that it was when we were looking at the residential development that would have just been all single-family lots with no open space really left over. Our fifth one that I have written up here was sort of a hybrid proposal, where there would be town-owned and managed passive and active open space, but with some residential mixed in, particularly along the Woodfield roadside. Again, we'd have some detached, age-restricted housing, age-targeted, single-family housing, while also maintaining a townhome style of age-restricted units along the piece that was proposed for development in 2011. And well, either having that as age-restricted or sort of gearing that towards being attractive to young professional households that would be coming into town. Again, from that, from that development, we got a fairly high unit count, dependent on how you laid out the units. It was significantly more than some of the other age-restricted housing development options we had looked at. One thing that we did, sort of the sixth one that isn't really written up here, was that we thought about how you could possibly do a mixed-use development, where you'd have some sort of retail or commercial along Woodfield Road, leading into whether you kept the golf course or did residential development behind the mixed-use development on Woodfield was subject to debate. But more and more, when we started looking at that, just from a market standpoint, from a visibility standpoint, and a use and traffic turnover standpoint, that really didn't seem to be particularly appropriate in our analysis for that area along Woodfield Road and for that particular neighborhood. So we went through all these alternatives and we found, you know, each one of them had pros and each one had cons. And it's kind, that's what we expected, and that's why we did so many development scenarios as we did. What we've kind of come to the conclusion, and it's on page six in the analysis section, there were concerns of, you know, when we looked at a development scenario we had done, is this too much development? Is this going to be too overwhelming for the surrounding neighborhood? Is there not enough open space? How can you, you know, how do you have commercial and retail uses in a neighborhood that's predominantly residential? And again, always in our mind is, what were the potential municipal fiscal impacts of each type of development? For example, if you have 60 new units of single-family housing, that really, you know, would kind of mesh with what the neighborhood character is. But we know that, you know, the cost for servicing single-family housing is higher than other types of uses. So these were all things we were trying to balance in our mind and going back and forth and sort of synthesizing all of that. We've come up with a recommended development concept. Unfortunately, my, the last person who used my easel decided to mess with one of the legs, so I'm down to a two-legged easel. I don't know if we have a second one that we might be able to use.
Can I use the chair?
You can use the chair.
Oh, it's there. The dates for the next 50 minutes.
Okay, so in this conceptual development that we've come up with, there are three areas. Area A would be the existing golf course, which at this point, we propose retaining as it is. The major changes to the golf course operations would be that the clubhouse, the current clubhouse would be subsumed as part of this area B, which we have identified in orange hatching along Woodfield Road, which would be the site of a, some form of attached townhouse, active adult housing. Across the street, over by the parkway, we would again try to get some active adult attached housing developed in that area as well. To service the golf course, there's, I believe originally, and it may have been back in the '40s and '50s, when the club was first in operation, there was access up around, somewhere in the area of that corner by Johnson Road and Ansonia. And there's still a building out there, I believe. And we propose having that serve as the entry point to a slightly reconfigured golf course. You would have to probably move some tee boxes around, obviously not have the first hole down at, down near Woodfield anymore, but would have to switch the number and a little bit of the orientation. But that's not, that's not a tremendous undertaking to do. In doing this, we maintain the open spaces of the golf course. You've got a new agreement in place with Casper that should be an improvement over, you know, the financial situation in the past. And at least for the time being, this allows the property to continue to be used as active open space. And when we move on to the next stage of getting into the issuance of an RFP, which we'll talk about in a little while, that could be included as part of an RFP. If a developer has some tremendous idea as to how to turn the golf course into some sort of development that makes even more sense, you know, you can leave that open and see what kind of proposals you get in return. But we really wanted to have the development be of an active adult nature and utilizing Woodfield Road. So in this case, we end up preserving somewhere in the area of 107 acres of open space, while still generating about 30 acres of development, of which it's a development type that doesn't demand a tremendous, doesn't place a tremendous burden on public services. In fact, as part of this, I've done some fiscal impact analysis, relatively quick, quick analysis. But I've been doing fiscal impact analyses for municipalities for over a decade, and we have a methodology we use that's pretty consistent, pretty accurate, in terms of seeing what, not only the one-time fiscal benefits are to a community, but what your annual benefits in terms of tax revenue versus cost of services will be. A standard, at this point in time and where the market is, for an attached townhome unit, a developer is likely to pay somewhere in the range of probably $35,000 to $40,000 per unit. So if a developer sees a piece of property, it's 100 acres, wants to do it as active adult, So if a developer sees a piece of property, it's 100 acres, wants to do it as active adult and attached housing, they figure out, you know, how many units they think they can get, multiply that by $35,000, and that's often the, very close to the proposed sales price that they come forward with as part of an RFP process. So I used that metric, 35,000 in Woodbridge may be conservative. It may be more towards 40. When the last proposal came in, in 2011, I believe it was $40,750 per unit was the proposed price, the proposed sales price. But, you know, seeing the market as it is, wanted to be a little bit more conservative. So depending on how many units you can get in this section, B, these two sections identified as with the letter B, we're figuring depending on how much open space a developer maintains, how much grading they do, how much changing the landscape they do, you can get probably somewhere between, in the range of 55 to about 110 units of housing. 110 is probably the upper limit of what I think from, just from, as an urban planner, for a neighborhood like this and for a town of this size, that's probably the upper limit of what you, what you would like to see in terms of density. So using those two figures of 55 and 110 units, at $35,000 per unit would get you somewhere in the area of, let's say, let's round up $2 to $4 million possible proposed sales price from a developer. Going ahead with the assumption that the higher number of units ends up being the number that's actually developed, I used a conservative sales price of $300,000 per unit, which again for Woodbridge may be, may be too conservative. But that would give you a total market value of $33 million. Once you apply the equalization rate, you end up with a little over 23 million in assessed value. And applying the mil rate of 34.14 to that, you end up with a little over $788,000 a year in annual real property tax revenue. On our last page, we can see that these folks will have to drive, assuming that these units will have not two cars, but let's say one and a half cars, again, to be conservative. Many of them may very well have two cars. You're looking at 165 vehicles being generated by a development of this size. I went into the assessor's grand list books and figured out what the average assessed value per passenger vehicle for the town of Woodbridge is, and that's about $10,600. So multiplying that out, you get about 1.75 million in assessed value. And after you apply the mil rate, you're looking at about $60,000 a year just in personal property tax revenue. So when you add that with the real property tax revenue, you're just south of about $850,000 a year in tax revenue to the town. There's a great set of multipliers from Rutgers University's urban planning department has put out, a great set of multipliers that, on a state-by-state basis, that breaks down housing by different types of units, how many bedrooms, whether they're ownership or rental, so you can really identify what the multiplier is for the type of unit you're looking at. For the units we see being developed here, you'd have probably about 1.78 persons per unit. So in total, just under 200 new residents would be in these units. Again, I went through the town's fiscal year 2014 budget and looked at the general government costs, what they are on a per capita basis, which is about a little over $1,900 per person for the general fund. So I multiplied that by the 196 residents we predicted, and that gives you service costs of about $377,000. So once you subtract that out from the tax revenue that you're going to get, you're a little bit under half a million dollars a year, free and clear. So you have a situation where you're preserving a large chunk of open space, you're keeping community resource that a lot of, a lot of folks are very much in favor of. And at the same time, you're getting somewhere between $2 to $4 million initially off the bat from purchase by a developer, and then almost a half a million dollars a year in tax revenue. Again, this doesn't include, when I do these, when I do full versions of these, I also try to figure out what the building permit fees are going to be, what the administrative fees are going to be, the planning and zoning fees, the site plan application fees, and add those in as one-time, one-time collectibles as well. But that essentially is sort of the conclusion we've come to, that this is our best estimate of how to mix and balance both development and open space preservation while giving the town a financial return that's acceptable, given the size of the property and what it brings to the community. So that is really the body of my report. I do want to mention, when we move on to the public forum in February, that the presentation tonight has been a little bit more informal, just to kind of give an update of where we are, what our thinking is, where we've been, that at a public presentation in February, at a date that we decide tonight, we'll start out with a PowerPoint presentation, start out with an overview of the process, how we got here, why are we the ones looking at this, et cetera, how this ties into the POCD and the work we're doing on that, go over some of the baseline information. I think that was very well laid out at the initial public listening session on October 2nd. I had a very good synopsis of the history of the property and how it came to be in the town's hands. I wanted to be able to give a good summary of the public listening sessions, what we heard, again, kind of touching on what I talked about tonight, but perhaps in a little bit more detail. And then go through each one of these options, which I verbally discussed tonight, but try to graphically present what our thinking was and how we got from step A to step, you know, point A to point B, what the pros and cons of each one were, and then getting, of course, to the arrival at our preferred option. I want to point out, and at that point, we probably have a good, that'd be a good point for discussion with the public. What needs to be pointed out is that, and why we have this as just kind of shaded areas, hatched areas, we, when we were doing our analysis, we actually took the time to lay out how units might actually be oriented, how roads might be laid out, where the open space might be. But you're never going to get the exact development that you sketch out from a developer who comes in and may have different ideas within the same realm of general ideas that you have. Their specific application of those ideas may be different. So we didn't want everyone to get tied up too much in the specific details of site layout and how buildings would be exactly oriented. We wanted to talk more about general use and magnitude of use and what, and things of that nature. So I want to be sure that that, you know, that that's very clear, that when the, when the RFP is produced and then issued, you may get back proposals that are, you know, significantly different from what we might have drawn up back in our offices. So I didn't want folks to get married to any one idea and then have an RFP go out and then get responses and then say, well, how come this doesn't look exactly like what we were talking about? I also want to talk about the fiscal impacts, probably a little bit more detailed, a little bit more in-depth than we did tonight. Talking fiscal impact analysis, you have to know how to balance and how to give the audience enough information so that they understand what you're talking about without getting too bogged down in the math. So we're going to try to, try to find that balance. And then it's really going to be about next steps. Where do we go after the public listening session? How does the RFP get drafted? When does it get drafted? When does, who's going to be involved in that? How does it get solicited and produced? And kind of talk our way through the whole solicitation process and what, really what the next steps are going to be. I do have is just, and a, four examples of different developments around the state of Connecticut, some of which I was able to get better pictures than others. But these are sort of the attached-type active adult housing units that we're talking about. Newberry Village in Brookfield is a very nice, a very nice development. One of the, the one on the upper left, the Village at Minnetoga in Glastonbury, that used to be, I believe, an 18-hole golf course, which they converted to a nine-hole golf course and then sort of linked in and integrated in age-restricted housing within, and of course, kind of meanders around it, which is a very interesting development style, one I haven't seen elsewhere in Connecticut. We have Oxford Greens there, which is a development up in Oxford that's done by Del Webb, who's a large national home developer, again, built around a golf course. Orano Village in Stratford, same thing, connected to the golf course. So these were all options of, you know, what's, what something might look like that we kind of had envisioned. We don't want four-story townhouses squished together with, you know, with no landscaping. We want something that's going to be, you know, not just a positive for the town in terms of tax ratables and development potential, but something that the community is proud to have within its borders. So those are some of the, some samples of kind of what we were, we were thinking about when we were drafting these, these plans up. So at that point, I've talked for, I've talked for 35 minutes, so it's somebody else's turn to start asking questions.
Well, thank you very much. You know, when we went through the process for selecting a consultant for the POCD, we really appreciated your willingness to expedite the country club piece because it's so important to the town, and indeed, you've done that. So thank you for this report. Are there questions, comments? Anyone? Any idea, thoughts about what we, yeah?
Michael, will you be doing?
If I may just, if you would just say your name and your commission when you?
Gary Mahon, Planning and Zoning. Will you be doing financial impact analysis on the other options? That's certainly something we can look at. In fact, it's kind of, it's something I want to do just to see how they all lay out. But yeah, I think we'll be able to do that in time for the publisher workshop.
Do you have a sense for whether the recommended option is the best one, most advantageous from a fiscal point of view?
I was thinking, I was actually thinking about that this week, and I was calculating, you know, how much a developer is likely to pay for, let's say, a single-family residential lot. It's normally about 20% of the home, what they expect the home sale price to be. So if it's new construction in Woodbridge, maybe, you know, you're talking $500,000, so a lot would be worth about $100,000, but then you have to back out infrastructure costs, so it's probably down more like around $60,000. And I was thinking of just the number of units and multiplying all of that out, and I, you know, I can't tell you definitively that this one is the quote-unquote "most" tax, positive tax advantageous. My gut feeling is it's, it's one of the top ones, but I don't want to specifically say that yes, this is the number one option until, until I take a closer look at that.
Kathleen Wallace, Planning and Zoning. In the, in your recommended proposal, you develop the 12 acres between Woodfield Road and the Merritt, but in all the other proposals, it's left as a buffer zone. So one, why did you do that? And then two, how many units in your plan of 110 or 55 to 110 actually fall in that, on that lot?
The, okay, the first, answer your first question. We wanted to do at least one development scenario where we had units that were visible from the parkway. This is something that's actually done more frequently down in Fairfield County, and they really have no, no problems with, with sales of those units. The reason we really, in the other options, we just kind of kept it as open space was because we were focusing so much of the development on the main 142-acre piece. We were looking, there are some site constraints on that piece, particularly wetlands, there's a couple of streams that wander through there. There wouldn't actually be a lot of units on that portion of the property, that by and large, the bulk would be on the, on the other side of Woodfield. I can't remember exactly how many units we could get over there, but it's probably, you know, not, not, you know, not much more than in, maybe in the teens at most, I would think.
Just one, on your financial or your fiscal impact, wrestling with the municipal service costs of $380,000, no schools, no snow removal, no maintenance and repair, the roads, they're on their own. What, I know you're applying it as conservative, you're applying a per-unit number to this. What potentially could cost the town $380,000 for these people to live?
Uh, let's see.
Ellen's not going to get paid anymore. I mean, it's not so likely.
You're going to get paid.
Yeah, maybe.
Ten times.
I'm going to get a free unit.
Reality, you know, we use this methodology and, just in case this question came up, I brought the book. So I've got that, if anybody feels like reading that, but I'm going to assume that I'll just take that home. Some of the services that might be used would be fire, emergency medical, police, although probably not much in the way of police. So it, you know, it all depends. What gets factored into it are little intangible things that may or may not be a tipping point for the town. There's, there's two ways of doing this. There's the per capita cost way, and there's the marginal cost way. And the marginal cost way takes you about 10 times longer and is much more difficult because you need exact information about town operations. So for example, I've worked on developments where we had, I'll say 100 units are proposed, and on a per capita basis, you say, well, that's going to cost the town X amount of dollars. And somebody comes forward and says, the building inspector is flat out, cannot do any more building inspections. If these 100 units come on, just the fact that these things exist, we're going to have to hire an assistant building inspector. And so that's your tipping point, and all of a sudden, that's a pretty big number to hire an assistant building inspector. So from a marginal cost standpoint, I don't think active adult housing units are going to cost as much as that number probably lends itself to, but the methodology produces that number, and we use the methodology, and we're generally happy with the results that we get. But I understand why you struggle with that number.
It'll never happen, so that's, it's a plus. I mean, we might have to hire a building inspector, but once the project's done, we're not going to keep the building inspector. Like I said, fire, I've been told that affordable housing, a lot of times, fire becomes pressed because there's 10 people living in a unit and they put in space heaters, but I think you're going to have adults, two adults in a house, and so I, that's fine. It's ultimately totally conservative, but I'd be hard-pressed to imagine it could cost anyone any amount of money, so.
There also could be hardship clauses within the agreements for age-restricted communities where there are cases where grandparents have to take care of their sometimes dependent grandchildren because of issues with the parents. And then you do occasionally end up, based on a hardship, have one, one or two children ending up in the local schools. That's another cost that, again, is very, you know, in the grand scheme of things, is very small. So that's another thing that would kind of be captured by that, I guess.
This is sort of an industry question as opposed to a planning question, but are you seeing in all of these active adult communities, and I understand that the density issues impacted by my question, but do you see that most of these active adult communities are building two-level or multi-level units?
I'm seeing both. When you, when, there are quite a few that are just single-story now. The ones that are multi-story, and almost always just being two stories, the condition is often that you have to have one bedroom on the often that you have to have one bedroom on the ground floor. And I think that's a way, if you do a difference between age-targeted versus age-restricted housing, age-targeted housing would be something like where the, you have a full bathroom and a bedroom on the ground floor, so it lends itself to folks who would rather not be using stairs. As opposed to a family who, you know, a younger family who may want all their bedrooms up on the second floor, removed from the, you know, active lifestyle downstairs. So I'm seeing both in the marketplace.
I'm just curious.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Michael, will Mr. Klein be at the next meeting?
I had not planned on having him come in.
Okay. I'm trying to reconcile the recommendation of the town maintaining the 18-hole golf course with his report.
Yes, there is one, that is a good point, I'm glad you pointed that out, because I missed that in going through the text. One of the things he did mention, which obviously caught my attention, was the, he is concerned with the golf market in the region and the supply, and there may be something to that of, you know, how many 18-hole golf, I haven't looked specifically at how many there are. I know there's quite a few just from either having worked in towns that have them or playing them, or just from anecdotal evidence. I don't think that, that doesn't necessarily preclude the continued use of an 18-hole golf course, it just makes it a little bit harder to be competitive, and you have to be a little bit, I think, more aggressive in how you go about marketing and doing things like that.
Well, you may be right, but it seems to me development of some of that data would be interesting if we're going to follow your recommendation that we continue to own and operate the 18-hole golf course.
Okay.
I know I would be interested.
Yeah, another question. Did you consider at all any type of community facility for the townhomes as part of the development?
I looked at maintaining the existing clubhouse in one of the scenarios. It wasn't one of the scenarios where we had the senior housing attached. Yeah, although we looked at it under one scenario, it wasn't the scenario where the two would be, let's say, combined.
And I'm not talking about using the existing clubhouse, but many of these developments have a community building for the.
Oh, I certainly think if a developer came in, that might definitely be, in fact, I'd be about 75% sure that that's something that a developer would want to put in, particularly once you get above a certain threshold number of units, makes a lot of sense not just having a little sales office, but having something.
Correct. So I wondered if that would change the number of units, actually, that you have.
If it did, it would be by only a small, I think.
Yeah, I think one thing to keep in mind is, after we go to the informational forum and we look at drafting an RFP, we don't have to be restricted to any particular proposal, and I think our goal would be to be as, to give developers as much leeway as possible within the parameters that we come to, you know, certain amount of development, certain amount of open space, but we don't want to restrict the creativity or ideas that might come to us. So I think it's going to be very, very important how it gets drafted.
One of the things I did have in my report is talking about the ratio, what would be an appropriate ratio of open space to building coverage. And I wanted to have the numbers for these four developments, and I spent some time digging through the assessors' databases for those four towns, but unfortunately, wasn't able to really come up with any usable data. But looking at some of the conceptual site plans we had drawn up, it just, a ratio of perhaps, and I have it here, between 15 and 20 square feet of open space per one foot of building coverage would be, you know, a nice range of, an appropriate ratio. You know, if you take a, let's say, your footprint of your unit, it's a two-story townhome unit, so let's say the footprint is 600 square feet, and so you want 20, let's say you use 20 square feet of open space for every foot, square foot of coverage, you're talking about 12,000 square feet of open space, which runs to about, a little under, a little bit over a quarter of an acre. So if you have a small complex of, let's say, four townhouse units together, you know, the idea of having roughly an acre of open space not directly behind it as like a backyard, but in the general area around it, is, you know, would probably give the kind of density and feel that would be appropriate for this town.
And just so that's clear, you're talking about open space in the developed area, that's not something the open.
That's not counting.
That's the golf course.
Correct.
Is there?
How would you see the provision of water and sewage disposal?
We would probably, now sewer.
City sewer and water and gas available.
Yeah, are available.
Are they close enough?
Sewer, I think the sewer comes right up to the property now, yeah. And I know there was some down on Fountain Street, and I think there's connection possibility as well. If you're going to do the type of development that we're looking at, yeah, you probably would have to make sure that there was those connections available.
Michael, going to Gary and Ellen's point, and trying to combine them a little, one thing I'd like to see for the next meeting, I'm interested in hearing more about option three and four than we did tonight, and one of the things I'd be interested in hearing, option three being the one with the nine holes and plenty of space available for senior housing, if that's what you were calling it, and then you said there was actually so much room that almost 200 units, well, I'm not interested in 200 units necessarily, but I am interested in hearing more about that concept and maybe some of the financials, as Gary was talking about, and also a little bit more about the other option, which, there's plenty of people in town looking at that option as well, which is basically option four, which is your open space option. And I'd like to hear a little bit financially about both those options a little bit more because in the end, I think that kind of provides a nice variety of some of the things towns have, anywhere from open space to maximizing profitability.
Okay.
Is anyone interested in hearing more about option number six, which did include some office space and on the side of the property that would be near the parkways, perhaps have some kind of, it's not in here, that was the one that Michael said, he eliminated thinking it wouldn't be appropriate, and I just don't know if anyone thinks that should be something that we present to the public to consider.
Right. I took it off the table, doesn't mean you guys can't tell me to put it back on, so.
Well, if you substitute coffee shop for office space, you'd have a lot of people who want it, I'll tell you that.
I don't know if any.
If you have information, and I don't think it hurts to get more information.
Okay, sure.
Michael.
Yes?
What are the square foot size of these units? What are you talking about, square foot?
For the active adult, I'd say about 1,200.
Small. 1,200 square feet?
1,200 square feet.
Is that an industry standard?
I mean, that's, you know, that's on the smaller end of the spectrum. A developer may come in with something, you know, larger than that, which would change some of the unit configurations.
Yeah.
Michael, 1,200 square feet's a little small, so is that in the townhouse style? Would there be a downstairs bedroom and an upstairs?
That's in the townhouse style.
Because typically, I find if you break up 1,200 square feet, where an upstairs downstairs, you start to get small rooms, is that, wow, do you see those units? Or is that, is that a smaller size? Is that a townhouse unit?
It's, yeah, it's, I mean, it's within the range, but, yeah, we haven't gotten into exactly how the units would be laid out internally and what the rooms.
I just wanted to be sure, but that is a bi-level townhouse style.
Yeah.
I would take from this, and I think that some scenario should include some larger units. They don't all have to be the same size, but I'm thinking from the people I've heard from in town who are anxious to move there, they would probably like more than 1,200 square feet, so maybe some mixed size.
If anyone else reach for it.
Jeff?
Well, I was under the impression that that would be part of the RFP to give the developer and let him come back with some kind of proposal, because he's going to, he's not going to, as much as we respect Michael, he may not agree with Michael, he's going to want to know what he has to do to make money.
Right.
So I think that's actually what's going to drive.
Right.
What's going to actually go there.
That's a very good point, Jeff. If I'm saying 110 units at 1,200 square feet, developer may come back and say, "Well, I'll do 84 units at 16, 17, 1800 square feet." That's up to the developer. The developers are going to have, working on this stuff day in and day out, are going to have a very sharp perspective in terms of what they can sell in the market for the price that they need to, need to get.
The other thing, one of the things that I find interesting is that this, if it works financially, it keeps a huge amount, the majority of it is open space. Whether it stays as a golf course or not, I think that just depends on whether it can support itself, but still, if you could sell off certain chunks of this and still make it so it's viable for the town to be able to pay for without additional debt, it's minimizing the development to the open space.
Good point. And I think you had pointed out, much of that castle that's being discussed really has development already, it's paved over, it has the building, so.
Right, that's the previous surface already in place.
The whole part along the parkway, yeah.
Yeah.
Michael, I'm not sure you do this kind of work. However, one of the things that I grapple with, you know, when Toll Brothers came, and basically, not to sound negative or positive towards it, but this is a Toll Brothers similar type of scenario, but it's double the units and not quite double the space. However, one of the concerns was, they used numbers similar to you, which showed at 110 units sold and everybody living in them, like that, this is the tax dollars we take in. However, when we asked them more, how many years typically would it take to fill 110 units, build 110, you know, you may have 10 units sold in the first year, you may get another 10 the year after, you won't get this kind of revenue for many years. So they did eventually give a more reliable breakdown of what customarily it takes to sell so many units, and I realize you're not a developer, however, is there anything that you have in your numbers that show a reasonable rate of units being bought?
An absorption rate.
Yeah.
That's certainly something I can get, I can get my hands on.
Just to get a feel of it once. You know, because just to look at it and say, "Oh, great, we're going to get, you know, $848,000 in taxes." Well, that's not, 110 units aren't going to be bought, sold, and lived in until many years, so try to, I just try to have that in grasp.
Okay.
The closest project to this in this area is Fieldstone Village, it's called in Orange, right on the corner of Route 34 and Grass Hill Road.
Right.
Where several Woodbridge residents are now, former Woodbridge residents are now living. They are, it's a big, it's a big open field, it's very unattractive.
Those are big units.
They've gone on for $600,000, $650,000, and they're selling them like hotcakes.
Those are huge units.
So I think, and again, it's very unattractive, I mean, you own a $650,000 house and there's a cow field across the street from you, and there's no trees, it's wide open.
But other than that, it's fabulous.
This is going to be, this is going to be secluded, wooded, near a golf course, I mean.
Those are huge units.
On top of, but they're also, it's been going on for 15 years, they haven't sold like hotcakes.
No, 15 years.
Well, the building hasn't.
No, it's not 15 years.
They started the original project, not top.
Not nearly 15 years, I'd say.
Okay, you want to say 12?
Not even, no. I'm talking about when construction started.
Any more questions for Michael?
Any more questions or comments on this? Great, well, thank you very much. Thank you.
And start taking your vitamins when it comes to that town meeting.
The next item on the agenda is to set the date for the public informational forum, and I will set it for February 19th. I had to wait until we saw what the decision was about referendum or special town meeting. We have a pretty full schedule in February if we go to the second town meeting and second referendum, but February 19th is available, and it is after the school holidays, which I think it will work.
It's a Wednesday?
It's a Wednesday, so that will be the date.
That's not a week of, that they're all coming?
They're only off Monday.
There's no vacation this year.
It's only Monday and Tuesday.
Right. Isn't that here?
Yes.
Couple of days.
Yes.
No winter break this year.
Skiing.
And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved. Thank you, everyone. Michael, thank you so much.